All right, I start as long as I can. It is 7:30, so we'll go ahead and get started. Thank you, everybody, for coming. It's a pleasure to have you all here this evening. I'm glad to see you all. You're certainly welcome to stay the rest of the evening. I'm sure you'd like to. Anyway, we'll get into that here in a minute. We'll begin with invocation by Chaplain Gary Smith. Gary, if you'd be so kind. Mayor and council, thank you so much. Shall we pray? Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening. And Lord God, as we enter this very special season of death and resurrection, we remember you. And Lord God, I pray special blessings on the city employees who have worked so diligently during the times that we've needed help in clearing the streets and things like that. Lord, I pray especially for our first responders, our firemen, our police officers, how we patrol, the deputy sheriffs, who put their life on the line each and every day so that we can live in this gorgeous city. And Lord God, I pray that all of the actions taken by the council tonight will be pleasing to you. We pray all these things in Jesus' precious name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We'll begin with roll call.
Miss Lee?
Here.
Back in those?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Lucas?
Here.
Please?
Here.
Carmen?
Here.
Oscar?
Here. A current copy of the Meetings Act of Nebraska is posted on the wall at the back of the council chambers. On the consent agenda, all matters under consent agenda are considered by the city council to be retained and will be enacted by one motion. Any city council member may, however, remove an item from consent by request. But before we get into the agendas this evening, I have a very special, in my personal opinion, very special guest tonight, and I'm thrilled to have the honor of presenting Chaplain Gary Smith with the City of North Platte Codi Ward, Codi Scout Award. Gary, would you? Would you? Yeah. If you want to just hang out there for a second. I have, I have, I have plenty to say here. Gary Smith began his service as chaplain for the North Platte Police Department and the Lincoln County Sheriff's Office in 2007. His service has included traumatic law enforcement notifications, some that involved children, assisting both sworn and civilian employees, dealing with traumatic calls or incidents in the line of duty, performing weddings, officiating at funerals, offering comfort and company to families at the hospital when their loved ones is ill or ill, and most of all, daily visits to both the sheriff's office and the police department to check up on everyone. Gary serves as a road captain for the Patriot Guard, which helps honor fallen servicemen and women. He and his wife Betty, she's here this evening, Betty, would you, you're certainly welcome to stand as well, also travel around Nebraska, attending motorcycle rallies, providing spiritual assistance, and to assist wherever they are needed. As a member of the Ministers Association, Gary offers opening prayer at our council meetings, officiates at funeral services and weddings, and substitutes for churches and interim pastor. In one of his nomination letters, I'd just like to share with you, Tim Bruce said, "I couldn't think of, I couldn't think of another person more deserving of this award than Gary Smith. If there were more people like Gary on this earth, we would all live in a better place." And I certainly couldn't have said that any better. I just want to thank you, Gary, from the depth of my heart for what you do for this community, for our law enforcement community, for, for everyone that you have to deal with on a daily basis, and I thank you so mu- very much for that. So, welcome. Gary, would you, would you want to come on up? You're welcome. He's as much as he is. He's all right. He's understanding. Very congratulations. This is the highest award that the city goes out and you're preserving, so I thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for being here. George, did you want a picture? Now, as I said, you're certainly welcome to stay. You're not obligated by any means. I appreciate your being here. Thank you, everyone, for your support that you give for Gary. Okay. We'll begin with a consent agenda. Item number one is approved minutes of April 2nd, 2019. Item number two, place on file treasurer's report for March 2019. Three, send application of La Casa Del Rios LLC for a catering license located at 1911 East Fourth Street to the Liquor Control Commission with no recommendation. Item number four, accept bids and award contract for street improvement district number 326, Philip Avenue from Jeffers to Cottonwood to Paulson, Inc., in the amount of $971,697.20, and authorize mayor to sign the contract.
I'd like to pull item number four real quick.
Okay.
And then I'll make a motion that we approve items one through three, the consent agenda.
That motion passes?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number four, accepting bids and award contract for street improvement district number 326, Philip Avenue to Jeffers to Cottonwood to Paulson, Inc., in the amount of $971,670, or $97.20, and authorize mayor to sign the contract. Okay. My questions are, how deep is this project going? Is it going down, it looked like it was subsurface level? Is that right? So, we're going down and replacing the pipes underneath as well? Because I saw that in there. Are they going to smooth out that road? Because right now, you have major dips where we've already done the, or the state did, you know, has worked on the one ways and things like that before.
Yeah, we did that temporarily to get us through, but that would be between Jeffers and Dewey on Philip. And then on east of there, of course, we've had a lot of subgrade problems. And so, we're intending to concrete that whole section instead of...
So, right now, it kind of bubbles up? Is that going to be smooth leveled off a little bit, so that way, there's not quite such a dip for vehicles?
And are you talking about at Cottonwood, or are you talking about down by the...
Well, really, the whole thing is bad, but the, in-between the ones is the worst spot. And then, right now, along those curb lines and everything else, when you're going through there subsurface, whenever you're talking subsurface, like if you're coming out of those side streets and everything else, or coming out of any of those entrance and exits, you can bottom out a vehicle pretty quick.
Yeah, some of the, we'll do as much as we can, of course, but drainage patterns are established, so we have to meet existing grades with respect to that. We do have some grade changes we're doing there, as much as we can, but we have to maintain 2% cross slope on our pavement in order to get good drainage off of it, and then it has to get to the gutter line, and from the gutter line, has to get to our storm sewer. So, a lot of that's fixed already. We're not replacing all the pipes or relaying a bunch of pipe, but...
I was going to ask, how many leaks do we have along there? Do you, does anybody know?
I couldn't hear you.
How many leaks we've had along there?
Leaks?
Yeah.
Not so much leaks, a subgrade failure. It just, it's an old canal underneath there, and it just probably wasn't compacted or fixed as well. It should have been at the time it was ever paved to begin with.
Okay. How old is that subsurface underneath there?
Oh, man, that's 40 years, I'd guess. I don't know. Probably at that, anyway.
I was just curious, in comparison, like where we have downtown, that we've been doing some work and stuff like that.
We've been spending a lot of money on that to repair it and try to keep it up, and it just falls apart because the subbase is bad. If the base is bad, we have problems with the paving.
What kind is it underneath there right now? Is it that clay?
Well, there's some concrete under there that's broken out, and then above that, we've asphalted it.
Okay.
So, it's, it's not, it's underneath all that that the problem really exists.
Yeah, so it's all rebar and everything else?
Right. I know, and yeah, that's, the new one will be, the old one is not.
Okay. Cool. Thanks.
Did this, real, real quickly, did this come in your estimate, or are you starting to see price increases due to the work demands in the rest of the state?
No, this was pretty close to what, it was actually a little under what we thought it would be. You can tell by the second bid, it was quite a bit higher, but anyway, we were happy with the bid that we got. But all, all of our paving materials are, have gone up. I mean, because of the price of gas has gone up, we suffer that in construction field.
Tom, how, how do you, how do you propose to stabilize that subgrade so that we don't have these issues in the future?
We're going to use crushed concrete underneath. We're going to remove the bad part of it and use crushed underneath it to stabilize that.
Do you have any idea how deep that is, that you're going to have to remove the...
We, we cored it, but of course, when you core it, you only do certain points. You can't do it all, so we'll have to open it up and see what we have under there. And it's going to be an inconvenience for a time when we're working on it, because it's a major corridor, but we'll try to maintain it as well as we can for people's access.
So, is Paulson's bid a fixed bid, or?
Well, it's a, it's a unit price bid, which means we will adjust prices according to whatever we need as we build it. Yeah.
So, so this price could actually go up if they end up having to...
Could go up, could go down, too.
Having to remove more material than...
Yeah, that's right.
Than what you'd anticipated.
That's correct. Yeah. That's exactly correct. Yeah.
Hey, Tom, just that sewer right there by Walmart?
Uh-huh.
Or, excuse me, Walgreens?
Uh-huh.
You know, even when they water their lawns, it just seems to...
Yeah, doesn't, it actually doesn't do anything. Yeah, that, that, we're going to address that when we do this project and get it to where there's actually a drain that drains. Okay. That, that's a really good point. Okay. We noticed that, too. Thank you.
And that motion passes. Item number five on the regular agenda, approved recommendation by the North Platte Quality Growth Fund Citizens Advisory Committee to approve an additional $150,000 from the North Platte Quality Growth Fund for the downtown facade improvement program.
Move that we approve recommendation from the North Platte Quality Growth Fund Citizens Advisory Committee to approve an additional $150,000 from the North Platte Quality Growth Fund for the downtown facade improvement program.
Second.
Got a question for somebody, whoever's repping it. Okay. It's you. You got to be the bad cop, huh?
Oh, there's one more.
So, I guess my question is, how far did we get on the originals, and how far do we expect that $150,000 is going to get in terms of projects down there? Because right now, the biggest complaint is, well, it looks crappy, but you know, you can see the signs on a few of them that it looks good.
Yeah.
It's just not enough of them, so...
Correct. I think what was allocated prior to the request for the additional $150,000, we've allocated of the $350,000 we got the first time, we have about $80,000 left. We just wanted to make sure when, with the weather being nice again, when we started getting more applications in, we wanted to make sure we were able to at least continue on and tell, instead of telling somebody that we're out of funds, we don't want to have to stop at that time. So, of the properties that are, that are downtown, let's say approximately 90 properties downtown, I'd say a little less than a third have applied for funds, and of the third that are applied, there's probably been maybe 10 to 12 that have actually finished and completed some of the properties.
Is it mostly business owners or building owners that are using, that are applying?
It's kind of a combination of the, of the two. Mostly, it's the business owners that are coming. There's been one person, I think Studio 54, I think, is a leasing attendee, so I think that was one of them, but I think most of them are building owners, or they're tied to the building owners.
Okay. What's the reason for other business owners not being willing to, to put that money down? Is it too costs? Is it too costly for a program?
It could be.
The dollar to dollars is too much?
Maybe they just think it's fine the way it is. I think there's also some other improvements that are getting ready to happen. I think the Downtown Association has a, has a landscape plan that they're working on and some streetscape stuff that they're doing with. I think once that streetscape stuff is completed, as long, as well as Keith Blackledge Memorial Park and some linkages there through the alleyways, I think that'll kick off some other business owners to do some more work.
Okay. Thanks.
Sure.
Do you have any idea, out of the 90 buildings you're talking about, how many of them have not said, but they're intimiting that they're probably not going to do anything with their building?
We really haven't had any, any idea of saying, you know, who's not going to do anything and who is. It's a surprise to us whenever somebody makes the application, and sometimes, we have to turn the applications down because they're, they're not following our guidelines to be historically relevant to the existing facilities.
Thank you. Steve, I had a quick question about that. How, and I, I think one was notated, but how, how, how many projects are getting caught up in the historical preservation review process? And I, I guess, how do you feel in general that process is going at this point? Because that was something that was just enacted like a year or two ago, right?
It's been a little bit longer than that. But it's been going well. I think it's been a learning process for everybody on the committee, but I think the final results are the, I guess, if you take Blakely Enterprises and what they've done with their facilities, they've walked through this process very smooth, and they've appreciated everything that's been done. There's some other areas where if you're the building owner and, and you're doing your own work, we can't fund you doing the, your own work. We're funding contractors to do the work for you as part of those improvements. So, that's kind of a, some like it, some don't, but that's kind of how our guidelines are established and set up.
And Steve, just for the record, if you'd be so kind as give your full name and address, we all know you, but some may not.
Stephen Granger, and I live at 1120 Sherman Court, North Platte, Nebraska.
Thank you. Any other questions for Steve?
Stephen, on some of the structures downtown that are, are vacant and have been vacant for some time, is there any means of rehabilitating them with the owner? Or has anybody conveyed any concerns to the owner and what they might be doing with those properties?
We have not, but I think the city has done a little bit with some concerns of, of once a building has been compromised and you have pigeons or whatnot going in there, that they've tried to contact the building owners, and I think a lot of times, it's hard to find those building owners, especially if they're in California or wherever. So, that's been a little bit of a difficulty, and, and our guidelines really don't establish that yet, as well as our guidelines don't stop people from painting murals on buildings as well. It's not a bad thing, just our guidelines don't approach those.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Item number six, approved recommendation from the North Platte Quality Growth Fund Citizens Advisory Committee to approve two $20,000 grants to the North Platte Chamber and Development Corporation from the North Platte Quality Growth Fund to assist in years two, 2019, and year three, 2020, of their agreement with Buxton, a retail recruitment firm.
Move that we approve recommendation from the North Platte Quality Growth Fund Citizens Advisory Committee to approve two $20,000 grants to the North Platte Chamber and Development Corporation from the North Platte Quality Growth Fund to assist in years two, 2019, and year three, 2020, of the agreement with Buxton, a retail recruitment firm.
Second.
I have another question.
Sure.
For whoever from Chamber DevCo wants to talk. Okay. Nice to have you, Cassie. So, I guess my question is, what are we exactly getting in year two and three that we didn't get in year, you know, the first phase is they did a study, they kind of told us what we were lacking and stuff. Are they updating that study? I mean, is that what's basically going on here?
Sure. So, I'm Cassie Condon, the Vice President of the Deccanock Development Corporation here in North Platte. We reside at 502 South Dewey here in North Platte, Nebraska. To answer your question, what we are getting with year two is further research and an additional pursuit package. So, if you don't mind, I'd like to take a moment and review the last year, what we did get, what has happened, and how we are utilizing this information. So, Buxton is the retail recruitment firm that the Chamber DevCo Board decided to side on with in February of 2018. It came with a three-year commitment at $50,000 a year. So, we invested in the first year with our private business investment partners, and this request is for year two and year three. So, approved, that would be $20,000 for year two to go, go towards that second $50,000, which would be a 20% of the overall investment we are putting to this. If approved for the second, or the third year, excuse me, $20,000, it would be a total 26% investment. So, I just want to make sure and spell that out, that the overall investment is a total of $150,000. Buxton kind of comes with that recognition, that name, that retailers and real estate firms are looking for, that they are known for their factual provided data, their analytical data that is not biased. It is driven solely by what consumers are spending and the demographics we have. They do a consumer market assessment, which they did in year one, and they identify specific psychographics of our community, what our consumers are actually spending their money on, not spending what, not what they're spending their money on in North Platte, but what they're spending their money on, period. So, this tells the retailers that our consumers are spending their money on clothing, vehicles, and breaks it down into segments, and then that is what we can provide these retailers of. This is what our consumers are giving their dollars to. Scout is their customer analytical software. That is the data tool that I can use anytime a retailer contacts us, or when I'm going out and contacting these retailers, to provide demographic summaries and traffic maps and so on and so forth. There's about 14 different studies. With the mayor's approval, I will pass out a couple of the examples. The first one I'm passing around is a demographic summary report of a 25-minute drive time. We have four different sites within Scout, so I just chose Platte River Mall as being a centrally located location. We do have locations on the north and far south side of North Platte as well. You can see that a 25-minute drive time population gives us around 28,000 people. To a retailer, especially in this world, in this day and age, that's not a lot of consumers to be driving at.
We'll get it.
Sorry. The second report is a 90-minute drive time. So, this is what I have been using to communicate with retailers, and the fact that consumers in our area will drive 90 minutes for a shopping experience, for a restaurant experience, for groceries, 90 minutes is not uncalled for. It's not what retailers will typically look at, so that's one of the biggest hurdles, is that showing them that our demographics do not fit in a 25-minute drive time or a 90-minute drive time. So, I'm able to provide that with this data from Buxton. They also supplied us with a leakage and surplus analysis. And there's two here. So, I've shown both the 25-minute drive time and the 90-minute drive time for the retail leakage and surplus.
Same one?
Two different ones, 25 and 90.
These are 20 times.
So, this tool in itself has actually helped us communicate further with a retailer who was looking at our industry, because they can see that our estimated and potential sales are well off base, that our consumers are spending much more and not getting it within our demographics, or in our area, excuse me. What they also provided in year one was 20 pursuit packages. So, they formed an entire package to 20 potential retailers, and when I say retailers, that's not only clothing, shopping, that's also grocery and restaurants as well. Created these pursuit packages and sent them out on our behalf, saying that your, your retail has been matched with North Platte, Nebraska. And so, when I came on board in February, or in the fall, excuse me, of 2018, I started reaching out to those retailers, trying to build that relationship and sell them on North Platte. With year two, we got a 20 additional pursuit packages. So, we still have our 20 that we are trying to nurture and convince North Platte is the place to be. There's now an additional 20 that are going to be coming in that we can reach out to as well. On top of all of that, that Buxton has provided us with, there are also support for ICSC, the Recon Convention, that I will be attending in May. It is the world's largest gathering of retail investors and real estate investors. There's over 22,000 already registered for this conference in May, so I have their assistance when I'm making appointments and meeting with these potential customers as well. Go ahead.
I have a question about the, about these.
Yep.
So, one of the biggest things is I, that I run across is, and it's not just younger people, it's even older people and people that were formerly on the city council, as they said, "North Platte's dying. You know, why do you want to be here? You know, all the businesses are leaving. Look at the mall, it's, you know, three-quarters empty, you know? The strip malls, oh, no one can rent them out, they're all leaving. Look, Godfather's had to close and reopen another spot." You know, it's anything and everything.
Yep.
Would it be feasible that when you guys get these updated packets on the information that you guys be able to CC the council and administration, so we can have this information and be able to combat it one-on-one when they call us and when they talk to us?
I have some comments, but I maybe should let him answer that one.
I looked at Gary. I figured he would hop up.
Gary Pearson, President, North Platte Chamber, 502 South Dewey. Whenever we're dealing with individual companies, there's always an air of confidentiality that it's a respect between those that are trying to develop that relationship to convince them to be here, as well as not put the company on the spot. So, some of that information, if we were to provide that to the majority of the council members, or send it via public email, it becomes public information. One of the, the things that's good about making this request is that it is a chance to inform the public better of what the situation is, and retail is extraordinarily challenging. Throughout this process, we visit with people who have been in the retail recruitment business for 50-plus years, and sometimes longer than that, and I'm talking about people that manage the malls, including this one, the Noddle Company, who owns the Parkade Plaza downtown and all the properties they own out there. I talked to another retailer, his family's been in the business for 70 years, and someone that we're trying to recruit to town, and they're all really, you know, have been surprised how quickly this whole thing has kind of imploded on the national level, and the bankruptcies that's taken place. And one interesting demographic I heard from a guy whose family's been in the business for 75 years, is he said that America, the United States, has three times more retail per capita. per capita, retail sites than any other economy in the world. He says, "The closest one to us is Great Britain, and we're, we still have three times more properties selling retail than do the other economies." So it goes to show how challenging it is, and maybe how overgrown it was at one time, and then you have the advent of online shopping, and the younger generation who becomes very adept at doing that. It, it's, it's a situation where we need to be armed with as much ammunition as we can possibly have to sell those companies on, on North Platte. Entities that probably would have given us a very strong look 10 years ago, we're not even in the conversation anymore. And I, and I know the public, when, when they see those empty, especially the big box doors and the mall and everything, it lends to the situation, well, what's going on in the community? Well, that, similar things are going on in almost every community when it comes to, comes to retail and empty buildings and so forth. So it's a changing economy, we're all going to have to get smarter and better at. You're going to see some repurposing of some of those buildings, law of the malls, or what they're doing is calling it a demalling situation, where they're, they're now, instead of having the internal, where you have shopping places all in a centralized area, that there are going to be more storefronts, where people can come up, up front. And you see even Walmart right now getting into the online shopping. I'll give you just one more example, I know I'm getting off the beaten path here, but I talked to the manager at ShopCo, and they, for a long time, thought they were on a safe list. They, they were doing more business than they had done for some time, some of that was due to JCPenney's and Herberger's closing, which they hated to see too. But he said, "We had a, we had a really great year," and, but it doesn't matter on the corporate level when they're, they're going into bankruptcy. But he says, "Six months ago, we, we decided for the first time to go online, thinking that maybe people from the sand hills and the surrounding areas, that we would get some of their orders, and then they could come to town and pick them up." He said, "It was crazy. We had people in California, and Texas, and Florida ordering from ShopCo in North Platte, because they found it on the internet, and we were shipping it," and he says, "It was supplementing our revenue." But that's just an example of how, how crazy it is out there in, in the internet world. And, you know, where this thing lands, or if it ever settles, it's going to be one of the challenges we have to face as a community. But this has provided us, just in year one, we have two companies we're working with right now, both considering to be, to have a significant presence in North Platte, and this information really enlightened them. And I think it got them past that inquiry stage, to the point that they are, and, and both of them were situations where we reached out to them, they didn't reach out to us. And they are now more engaged in those conversations and negotiations now than I think they would have been had they not had this information.
My guess, I don't, I'm not worried if you wanted to redact anything that would be considered sensitive information, but I mean, strengths and weaknesses analysis might be appropriate, at least, to kind of understand where North Platte's at, if we could get a hold of that kind of information.
Yeah, well, we provided a lot of that to you this evening.
Yeah, that is meant, you know, like-
It's now public information.
Up when it happens.
Yeah.
So we can kind of keep abreast where, you know, where North Platte's strengths and weaknesses are, because I think that's only fair when we have to make decisions on roads and things like that, that, you know, and, and other projects that come up, that we can make those with the most amount of information that we have possible.
Yep, and I, I really, I appreciate where you're coming from, and that's also why we have representation on our chamber board and our Economic Development Committee, that are city representatives, and that way we can talk in that air of confidentiality, where we don't have to, to worry about the public venue, you know, of violating somebody's confidence.
Yeah. Like I said, I don't care if, you know, you guys needed to redact or, or keep anything that would be sensitive away, I just thought it might be prudent.
Gary, I have a quick question for you. I'm curious, as, I mean, I remember talking to national retailers three and four years ago, and at that point, they would take three or four years to make a decision when they decided they wanted to come to a community. Are you seeing that shortening because of the craziness of the retail world, or do you think that's lengthening, or do, how, how long do these companies take to make their decision typically, once they like us?
That, that used to be the standard.
Yeah.
You know, and sometimes you could accelerate that, depending on what was going on in your community, but they're all just, they're hunkered down and trying to survive if they're on the, the national corporate level. The brick and mortar is basically suffocating them, because they're, they're losing revenue, and it's not necessarily because Herberger's, I know Cassie can speak to everybody that's been at the mall, she was there for a long time, and she knew, she saw their revenue numbers, and they were healthy businesses here, but when, when it happens on the national level and the corporates calling the shots. But right now, we're saying to mall, that initial conversation, and she can speak to this, is, "No, you're not under consideration," and so, you know, we're, we're going to the, kind of that mid-level, maybe they haven't overbuilt, they're still emerging, they've found a niche that's working. I think we're going to see a resurgence, renewal of the entrepreneurial spirit, and the small niches in the retail community that we can help those young, those small business local entities get started, and help fill that gap.
But the decision timeframe for these companies is still long, right? I, I think sometimes, it's the public, we all misinterpret how long these national retailers typically take to move into a community.
Though, one of the entities that is considering North Platte very strongly right now, I found information going back from a private developer here in North Platte, who had reached out to them in 2013, on a letter, and it, and it's taken that long to nurture that relationship, for them to, to build the confidence to do what they're doing, but yes.
Yeah, I, I feel like this Buxton deal needs to probably be a five-year commitment to really measure it, in my opinion. I mean, I appreciate doing it, like, one to three at a time is, is smart and frugal, but I honestly feel like we're going to need to go five to figure out the true value in it, in my opinion.
Yeah, our intention was always to come and ask for the partnership in year two. We wanted to have a little more success behind us in year one, to be able to do that, but as you, yeah, as you mentioned, Ty, it's, it's, you've got to be in it for the long haul. It can't be a, a start-and-stop situation, but we'll have a pretty good judge after three years, how, how it's working.
Gary, question on the demographic summary report, and maybe I should address this to Cassie. These numbers go from 2000 to 2010, and then from 2010 to 2017, and then 2017 to 2022.
Yep.
As I recall, when I look at the United States Census Bureau data, our community has lost population from 2011 until current year, every year. That's not reflected here, and-
This, sorry.
My, my question then is, they're showing us having a 2% increase from 2017 to 2022. Given the fact that we've lost population every year since 2011, what do they believe is going to turn that around?
That would be a great question for the Buxton analytical team. I can say that 2010 was our census, and it's a 25-minute drive time of North Platte, so it would help encompass some of the residents that we lose out, Lake and North, who don't fall within the North Platte city limits. The 2017 is, that's when they polled their information and started analyzing the data, when we signed on to a contract with them, and then gave a five-year update. I'm not sure why the analytical team chose a 2% increase, of course, I was happy that they came back with that, because that helps numbers when talking with retailers, but I'm not sure on why the 2% came from.
When, actually about a year ago now, I, I looked at a geography which was probably extended past our normal trade area, but I looked at, from Valentine, basically to the Kansas border, and I looked from Ogallala to the eastern border of Dawson County, which would be just east of Lexington and that Elm Creek area. And, and most likely, those folks are not going to come to North Platte, they're going to go to Kearney, just because it's closer.
Sure.
But in that area, if memory serves me correctly, from 2010 until 2017, we've lost about 2,700 people in that geography.
Yeah.
And so, when I, when I travel and look at the small communities in our, in our area, the Grants, the Ogallalas, the Thedfords, the Mullins, the, the Calaways, these people, these communities are all losing people. And those are people that are not going to be coming to North Platte to shop anymore, because they don't live there anymore. So my question really is, and I know you can't answer it, but I'm curious what makes these evaluators, Buxton, believe that, given the demographic decline that we've experienced, what's going to turn that around? Because our community's still driven by agriculture, and, and I know maybe some people don't realize that, but agriculture still greases the wheels in North Platte. And it takes a lot fewer people to operate the farm than it did 10 years ago, or 15 years ago. It takes a lot fewer people to operate the ranch that it did 10 or 15 years ago. And so consequently, those people are gone, and we don't have a manufacturing base in North Platte to draw people to town. I'm, I'm just wondering, there, there has to be some basis for them to have made an evaluation that we're going to increase in population, and, and I'm wondering what that might be, because if we're going to be giving them more money, I'd like to know why they think that we're, our population's going to grow.
Got it. I understand your question. I would say, like, I don't know if you want to add more to that, Gary, but I would, I'm going to take it back to my analyst team tomorrow. I've had a lot more communication in the last three weeks with Buxton than I did in my first few months. We received a new account executive, which I've been very pleased with, we kind of applied pressure, and we're getting a lot better communication out of them, and maybe that's a personal standard of my own. I expect to send an email and get a response in 24 hours, that's just me. But, so, I will push on with that question as well.
What, what area that does draw some of the expenditures or, or sales in North Platte is the fact that we're an interstate community, and we're on US 83, and traffic has increased on, on those thoroughfares consistently over time, and, and that could be a partial factor in it as well, as far as capturing, you know, potential sales.
Gary, I remember attending Buxton's initial presentation in the community, and one thing, to your question, that I was extremely impressed with was their access to data. My recollection is they have full access into the Visa MasterCard network and other private sources of data beyond just your public sales tax and census data, but my understanding is they have, they're one of the, and there's, I don't think there's that many access points to the MasterCard Visa network. I can guarantee in my profession, if I want to know what everybody's spending in their Visa MasterCard, we don't have that ability. And so I recall from their initial presentation, being very impressed at their data sources for deriving information, and I'm assuming that's still how they derive a lot of their information.
Yes.
And just to add to that, I can back up, because I talked to one retailer here in town that's a locally owned retailer, and they track all the, or all the, not visas, all of the zip codes where every transaction comes from, and most of their transactions on a retail front here come not from inside North Platte, it's from people coming from outside of 69101, and driving here, and stopping here, and most of them are via the interstate. So I know we do get a significant amount of retail sales, if you will, off of people just driving by, and just happen to stop because they're tired and need to stretch their legs or whatever, and they end up somewhere, and then they buy a shirt or a, whatever it is they're, happen to run into, so.
I did want to make sure and mention too, that part of our Buxton partnership is the LSMX platform. It's a retail development program for existing retailers, so we're not just feeding into wanting new retailers, we want to help breathe life into our existing retailers, and we're not wanting to push anyone out. There's a special platform, and I can sign any of our Chamber DevCo members up for it, excuse me, that will help them implement advertising campaigns that are targeted, and they can go in and look at their existing consumers, and what those existing consumers are spending their money on. So it really helps target if they're going to look for expanding to men's line, or they're going to expand to children's clothing, it will help provide some of that data as well. So there's also that partnership with Buxton as well.
Just a real quick question about Buxton.
Sure.
I mean, I'm sure it's a very large, it's nationwide. My question is, how many hours or, per week, per month are they dedicated to our community? And do we have a dedicated crew at Buxton that just works on us? Or are they taking on several cities at the same time?
So there's teams, and several cities at the same time, would be the short answer of that. They provide the data and hand it over to us, and it's really, after we have the pursuit packages and the scout portal at my fingertips, it's up to me to start reaching out to the different retailers. So I think in the beginning, we thought it was going to be a little different, and we thought that we could basically hand this over, and that Buxton would be hired as a full-time employee, basically, and that's not the case. There's a lot more work on our end that has to happen, and that's been my biggest focus since I was hired on in September.
Thank you.
So I can spend anywhere from two hours to eight hours a day on it, depending on what I have.
When you communicate with these prospective business entities, what are some of the things that they bring up to you as the reasons that they would like to locate in North Platte? And conversely, what are some of the reasons they give to you that they, they may not want to relocate in North Platte, or to locate in North Platte?
Sure. So the biggest thing I hit on is the opportunity that is here, that we've lost several big names, and that just provides that those consumers were spending dollars here, and now they're not spending those dollars here. The biggest hurdle is that most of them are, say, telling me that they are not expanding at all, that they're tightening their belt, and they're not looking to expand in 2019, if in 2020 at all. So the biggest hurdle is just getting anything out of them, saying, "Yes, we're looking to expand." The few that have expansion plans are telling me that they're looking at tier-one communities only, communities such as Chicago, New York, Boston, and these are all cities that they name off, something North Platte can't even compete with. So I return with the opportunity and the 90-minute drive time that this is not being met by any of retailers now. As Gary mentioned, I know the sales of some of those larger retailers that left the mall, and without naming names to any of these retailers, I can specifically say that this anchors received this amount in sales each year. I know that that's the dollars we've lost out in, in this community, or they're going online, and those dollars would be spent in your store, sort of communication.
Thank you, Cassie.
Yeah.
Item number seven, approved cooperative service agreement between the City of North Platte and United States Department of Agriculture relating to pigeon control.
Move that we approve cooperation, cooperative services agreement between the City of North Platte and United States Department of Agriculture regarding, or relating to pigeon control.
That motion passes. Item number eight, consider resolution consenting to the sale and consumption of alcoholic liquor on property owned by the City of North Platte, including a portion of West Fifth Street, during the Creativity Unlimited Arts Council slash Prairie Arts Center Artist Fair fundraiser on June 8th of 2019.
Move that we approve a resolution consenting to the sale and consumption of alcoholic liquor on property owned by the City of North Platte, including a portion of West Fifth Street, during a Creativity Unlimited Arts Council slash Prairie Arts Center Artist Fair fundraiser on June 8th of 2019.
That motion passes. Item number nine, approved application by Creativity Unlimited Arts Council Prairie Arts Center for a special designated license on June 8th, 2019, from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM at the Prairie Arts Center for 16 North Jeffers Street, for an artist fair fundraiser.
Move that we approve application by Creativity Unlimited Arts Council slash Prairie Arts Center for a special designated license on June 8th, 2019, from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM at Prairie Arts Center for 16 North Jeffers Street, for an artist fair fundraiser.
Second.
Second. And that motion passes. Item number 10, consider resolution consenting to the sale and consumption of alcoholic liquor on property owned by the City of North Platte, including a portion of West Fifth Street during the Creativity Unlimited, Unlimited Arts Council slash Prairie Arts Center Husker Football Tailgate Event on September 7th, 2019.
Move that we approve the resolution consenting to the sale and consumption of alcoholic liquor on property owned by the City of North Platte, including a portion of West Fifth Street, and during the Creativity Unlimited Arts Council slash Prairie Arts Center Husker Football Tailgate Event on September 7th of 2019.
Second. And that motion passes. Item number 11, approved application by Creativity Unlimited Arts Council Prairie Arts Center for a special designated license on September 7th, 2019, from 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM at the Prairie Arts Center 416 North Jeffers Street for a Husker Football Tailgate Event.
Move that we approve application by Creativity Unlimited Arts Council slash Prairie Arts Center for a special designated license on September 7th, 2019, from 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM at Prairie Arts Center 416 North Jeffers Street for a Husker Football Tailgate Event.
Second. Item number 12, authorize Scott Standage to execute purchase agreement for the purchase of property at 921 West Eighth Street in North Platte for the purpose of constructing an electric substation.
Move that we authorize Scott Standage to execute purchase agreement for the purchase of a property at 921 West Eighth Street in North Platte for the purpose of constructing an electrical substation.
Scott, if you'd be so kind?
Come on down. Were you planning on just building that on the back of that property that's there?
No, actually, we're going to take the
Whole building down?
The whole lot, yeah. We're going to have the whole lot, and then the landscape, but we'll put a nice fence around it and white rock it and stuff, so we'll make it look good.
Okay, just curious, I was over there and looked at it today, and I thought that'd be the way, but I'm not an electrician, so.
Yes, sir.
Have there been any kind of public opposition to this out there?
Not that I'm aware of.
Property owners and what?
Not, not that I'm aware of, I haven't, we'll, we'll actually think it'll look really good. We'll beautify it so that it'll look
It might improve.
It may.
Um, what part of the, I mean, like, how far out does this, is this one going to help in terms of like keeping power on during troubled times, you know, in terms of stretching, reducing the stretch on the system?
Right, what this is going to help is basically the north side of town. We are running a really high load out in the northwest part of town.
Where are they pulling it from currently?
We just have two substations on the north side, and we actually want to add this one, and it'll be pretty much right in the middle.
Okay.
So we can shift most of our load out to the northwest part of town through an existing substation.
Okay.
That's our main plan, anyway.
Because I know that they've had a lot of problems over the past, you know, every, every summer we get, you know, a severe thunderstorm, and then KNOPE posts a thing, well, where have you lost power at? And you, you can kind of get a pretty good feel for where the, the problem areas are, so.
Yeah, but we can't control that lightning.
Well, I mean, you can't help if a transformer blows somewhere, not either, but, you know, I mean, we can always try to mitigate as much as we can.
Sure. Yep.
Scott, how long will this project take you?
Well, we were talking to our engineer the other day, and to get a transformer for the substation actually is a year.
A year, huh?
By the time we order it until we can receive it, so it's going to be probably a two-year process before we're completed.
I know it's budgeted already, but I can't remember, what's the amount of cost for a substation like this one to be put in?
Just a whole substation with the switchgear and the transformer will run around $600,000.
Okay.
Thank you, Scott. Motion passes. Item number 13, second reading action on ordinance number 4003, amending section number 94.021 of the North Platte Code of Ordinances adopting the NFPA 101's Life Safety Code 2012 Edition and NFPA 1 Fire Code number, or 2012 Edition.
Would you like me to read the ordinance?
Yes, please.
An ordinance of the City of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska, amending sections 94.021 of the Municipal Code of the City relating to the adoption of the National, to NFPA 101 Life Safety Code 2012 Edition, including the NFPA 1 Fire Code 2012 Edition. Repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict you're with, providing for the effective date and publication thereof.
I'd make a motion that we waive the third required reading and pass on second, uh, to be able to pass on second reading, ordinance number 4003, amending section number forty, or 94.021 of the North Platte Code of Ordinances adopting the NFPA 101 Life Safety Code 2012 and NFPA 1 Fire Code 2012 Edition.
I'll second that.
And I just want to say one thing, because I know this had some contention last time on it. On life safety stuff, I guess, I just feel that where it's not going to, doesn't appear to have any direct impact on, you know, costs or major shift in policy, other than defining it, I just like to pass public safety things. I'd rather hate than some accident happens or something happens on a site, and, and it's like, well, you know, we could have worked this out, but we were behind by several weeks, or Bush George behind by, you know, a couple of months understanding something, and, you know, we had problems that we could have worked out beforehand, so I like public safety stuff, and I don't have a problem passing it early.
So this is a motion to waive the required three readings?
Yes.
I'd just comment that the contrary opinion I have is that, that code changes need time for public input, and, and if there's a compelling reason for moving it faster, I'm all for it, and I'm all for this change, but I'm just not very comfortable with speeding up code ordinances, because you could have businesses or, or projects in the design phase that may want to comment on it. And so that's why I'm completely still in favor of this change, but I'd just like to see it go through the timeframe for people to provide input to the community. Even though we'll probably never hear from anybody on it, I just fundamentally feel that way.
I make a motion that we
Oh, no, it's, it's, it's
Two thirds.
Takes six votes, so it fails.
I make a motion that we would approve second reading of ordinance number 4003, amending section number 94.021 of the North Platte Code of Ordinances adopting the NFPA 101 Life Safety Code 2012 and NFPA 1 Fire Code 2012 Edition.
Item number 14, action on ordinance number 408 to create water extension district number 263, including the east 38-foot of Lot 5 Hyatt's fourth subdivision, south 100 feet of Lot number one of the block four, Lincoln Highway Edition, Lincoln Eighth Edition, the north 387 dot zero seven foot of Lot one of block four, Lincoln Highway Eighth Edition, lots seven through nine, and the west 37 point one foot of the lot 10 block three of Lincoln Highway Eighth Edition, lot seven and eight, and the west 50-foot of Lot six, block two of Lincoln Highway Eighth Edition in the City of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska.
Would you like me to read the ordinance?
Yes, please.
An ordinance creating water extension district number 263, beginning at the existing water main on the 2,000 block of West Eighteenth Avenue, thence west approximately 255 feet to the intersection of North Emery Avenue, then south along North Emery Avenue approximately 195 feet to the existing water main, within the corporate limits of the Extraterritorial Zoning District of the City of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska. Establishing the outer boundaries of the district, designating the size, location, and terminal points, and referring to plans and specifications and estimates of the city engineer in connection therewith on file with the city clerk.
I move that we waive the three required readings on ordinance number 4008.
That motion passes.
Motion that we adopt ordinance number 4008 to create sewer, or water extension district number 263, including the east 38-foot of Lot 5 Hyatt's fourth subdivision, the south 100-foot of Lot one of block four, Lincoln Highway Eighth Edition, the north 387 point oh seven foot of block one of, of Lot one of block four, Lincoln Highway Eighth Edition, lots seven through nine, and the west 37 point one feet of block of Lot 10, block three of the Lincoln Highway Eighth Edition, lot seven through eight, and the west 50-foot of Lot six, block two of Lincoln Highway Eighth Edition in the City of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska.
Uh, someone didn't vote?
It was Lawrence, I did it before.
Lawrence, you're slow again.
Go yes or no.
One. Okay, that vote
Spoke it, I did.
Vote passes eight, zero, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, item number 15, action on ordinance number 406, creating sanitary sewer extension district number 348, to include the south 150 feet of the following, Lot one of Plainview Second Replat, the west 228 feet of Lot seven of the Platte View subdivision, and all vacated Welch Street adjacent thereto, and the west 48 feet of the east 96 feet of Lot seven of Platte View subdivision. The north 150 feet of the following, lots one through four of WF Ackerman's subdivision of Lot 19 Platte View subdivision, part of Lot 18 of Platte View subdivision, beginning at the northwest corner of Lot 18 of Platte View subdivision. Thence east along the north line of said lot, a distance of 88 feet, thence south parallel with the west line of said lot at distance of 151.5 feet, thence west parallel with the north line of said lot 18 at a distance of 88 feet, thence north along the west line of said lot, a distance of 151.5 feet. The point of beginning, the east 44 feet of the west 132 feet of the north 151.5 feet of Lot 18 of Platte View subdivision, the east 50 feet of the west 182 feet of the North Platte 151.5 feet of Lot 18 of the Platte View subdivision, and the east 99 feet of the west 281 feet of the North Platte 151.5 feet of Lot 18 of Platte View subdivision to the City of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska.
Would you like me to read?
If you would be so kind.
An ordinance for the creation of sanitary sewer extension district number 348 within one mile of the corporate limits of the City of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska. Establishing the outer boundaries of the district, designating the size, location, and terminal points, and referring to plans and specifications and estimates of the city engineer in connection therewith on file with the city clerk.
I move that we waive the three required readings on ordinance number 4006. I now move that we approve ordinance number 4006.
I think I'm getting dizzy. Would someone stand up and take their finger and trace around the approximate area of this, a couple of square meters, please?
Yeah.
I was going to say, we have a map.
Yeah, it's in your docket.
It only shows a couple blocks, though.
Just got steals property, right? Apparently, that's not city limits?
No.
Some of it is.
Everything north, the north side of the street is not. Everything out north of the north right-of-way line of East Sixth Street out in that area is out.
Dave, avoid that extra sales tax.
Oh, I got so excited. Uh, that, that motion passes as well. Item number 16, claims.
Make a motion to pay the claims.
Second.
Real quick, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I think I need to abstain from this vote. There's a claim to Nebraska Land National Bank from the bond refunding, so I'll just ask to abstain from this vote discussion.
Thank you.
Vote twice for you. What is this for?
Oh, shit.
That motion passes seven, with one extension, whatever you call it.
They're talking, they're asking for a reading.
Yeah, there you go, I couldn't spit it out.
Now motion to adjourn.
That's 77 pages.
I know.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.